All right, good evening. This will have called to order the planning board meeting on June 23 at 6:00 P. M. Would anybody like to make a motion to wave in reading here? Anyone? Thank you very much. First on the agenda is administrative items. The following items may be moved as a single item, unless a number of the board requests otherwise. I think if you don't mind, we'd like to let's go ahead and go through these separately in case we want to touch on some planning board administrative details separately. First up is ZB A case 2025-06 for 105 St. George Street. Do we have anybody here for that?
Yes, hi, I'm Carla Jaspers. I'm here for that.
Carla, would you like to go ahead and tell us a little bit about what you're asking about?
Yes, sure. We have lived at 105 St. George since the fall of 2020 and the barn has been in sort of a state of disrepair since we purchased the home. And we're at a point now financially where I think it would make sense for us to explore demolition and rebuild. It's unfortunately, it's just sort of so far gone that it's it's kind of deteriorating. It's a bit unsafe at this point. So we're looking to demolish the barn. We'd like to obtain a special permit so that we can rebuild. It's a bit of a unique lot where the the barn is as it sits is pretty close to the property line, the abutters property line. So it's a it's a large footprint. We will, we've drafted a plan that's a bit smaller footprint, but it still would be like a a nonconformity, I guess, right? So we are seeking a special permit prior to demolition just because of the nature of the barn, the current status and just the safety risks to the overall property right now as it stands.
All right, thank you, Carla. So technically, just to understand, we don't actually approve this, but we can make recommendations, but it will actually be the ZB A.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. Yep.
Does the board have any questions? Jen, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. It's pretty straightforward.
Well, it's in the file and I'll know it. It's nice to see you, Carla. That you're able to move forward now. There was a demolition delay, sort of inspection and process that went through in 2023 and expired in 2024. And the historical commission is not a consulting party, even a special permit. So I just want to make sure you don't get hung up on that. I let Ed know that you're planning to move forward with demo. But I don't think that'll be a barrier because it wasn't determined historically in the first place.
Right, right. Yep, exactly. They came and had a look and right, they were, everybody was unanimously in favor of it not being an historical structure. So yeah, that's that's great. Thanks for confirming with it and I appreciate it.
Anything else from the board? Do entertain a motion to defer this to the ZB A?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion from the board?
I'd just like to add that this is subject to my peers on the board, but I would add in the deferral that we see no reason from a planning perspective to not approve this.
Great. Need a second on that amendment, I guess.
To recommend without reservation or something like that?
Jen, what were the words you used?
That's fine, without reservation.
Sounds good. Any discussion on the motion as it stands as amended? No? All right, we'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote, starting with Jen.
Jen Turcot, I.
Kristen Rappi. And Bush and Carrie. Thank you. All right, thank you for joining us, Carla. Appreciate it.
Very good. Thanks. Have a good night.
Our next step, ZB A case 2025-07 for 260 to 266 St. George Street. Do we have anybody here to speak on behalf of that case? No? Okay, we do not. This is really a ZB A issue. Does anybody have, does anybody on the board have any comments they'd like to make?
I was wondering where the tight tag was, if they mentioned, it's not on the plans.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to entertain a motion with, we can say a motion to defer this to the ZB A and asking them to confirm where the tight tag is, since it wasn't on the planner? Good motion?
Is that the motion?
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the board on this? Nope. Okay, also a roll call vote, starting with Jen.
Jen Turcot, I.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next up the minutes. I personally didn't have a chance to read this. If everybody else did though. Any, any? Anybody, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes as the thing?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do you have a second? Thank you. Any discussions in the board on the minutes? Okay, we'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote, starting with Jen.
And Turcot, I.
And the motion carries. Thank you. All right, so next up, we have a planning board administrative. Does anybody from the board have anything they'd like to discuss? This point. I would like to mention that the town has hired a planning director. And they are, the start date is not finalized. This is all conditional upon passing the background check and the criminal check and so on. So as soon as we have more information, we'll be able to share more of that.
Great, for the year.
Yeah, that's great, great news. We don't know how much longer we have for Rebecca for, but we're hoping if there's a big overlap, certainly. It's been wonderful to have you, Rebecca. So sorry that you can't see. I do want to talk a little bit about the, about the, the special town meeting. Is that something that you all feel we could do during the administrative part or within the committee liaisons, or is that something we should put on the agenda specifically?
I expect that we discuss.
Just want to make sure. Is it better to the A S O part, do you think? Yeah, okay. All right, part of our administration. All right, so thank you, Ted. Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Steve. Gosh, almost like So thank you so much for all of your work on the working group committee for all the hard work that you did about workshops and the planning and speaking up and putting that presentation together. That was instrumental and and the, and the town and the vote at town meeting that allowed us to pass this. The M B T A's community zoning and it allowed us to come into compliance. That's huge. Anybody want to talk about any thoughts about the whole process? Jen, you've been around the block. You've been on the board the longest. I'm sure you have some, is anything you'd like to share?
I'm glad that you brought it up because I just wanted to thank you both for, I know that there was so much work behind the scenes and you were tireless. And it, you know, it could have gone either way, really. It was a really close vote with a really small number of people in the room voting and very grateful for your efforts.
You've been on there forever. Just hangs on.
We have a little bit of background noise.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Jen. Yes.
No, that that was all. I said, so thank you for bringing up the topic and I'm glad that it is behind, the vote is behind us now and we can move on to other issues.
Yes, agreed. Thank you, Jeff. Lauren, any thoughts from your perspective?
No, just again, reiterate, thank you. Yeah, great job.
Thank you. Yeah, I, yeah, I, as Chair of the working group, it was, we know we're getting into, it's going to be a ton of work. And, and certainly turned out to be very dedicated volunteers, particularly. And we, you know, had a lot of things that we had to go through, a lot of things that were very contentious. But I'm very grateful for the work that everyone, everyone put in. I do want to say go off Ted. Ted was singular among us in terms of the work, the effort, the knowledge, the effort, and I'm deeply grateful for that.
Sure, well, somebody had to. Yeah, thanks. I want to make sure we also thank Rebecca and Emily.
Oh, yes.
It was kind of torture at times, so I really appreciate the support and dedication to get us over the finish line. In terms of the planning board, there's a couple of follow-up items that, you know, we've touched on in the past, that we want to make sure we don't lose track of on the agenda one. And it relates to the way the bylaws written and borrowing from other sections. So we have a relationship between 440 and 615 now that we are going to need to walk through and I suggest perhaps it's appropriate to speak with the building inspector about that, about the implications for that. And then more significantly, it is the fact that when we brought in the language from section 700 and reconciled the conflicts there, 700, of course, references section 800. So now we have a sort of a dangling connection between the existing 440 language that brings in the 700 language and then section 800. And anyplace where there's a special permit mentioned in either 615 or 800, we're going to have to resolve that basically through regulation, as I understand it. So this means that we are on the book and correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, yeah. Outside of my expertise here, but I think that the regulations associated with section 440 would spell out procedurally you know, make sure there's no special permit interfering with the right development.
Has the working group thought about putting together kind of like a, like a sort of a summary of things that the planning board could, would you consider kind of looking?
Discuss it at the meeting on Thursday. Our last plan and work on the meeting for Thursday.
Our engagement has worked with the stars on the thirty, yes. But I guess so, Emily, if you could tap that onto me, chime in for the Thursday, that would be great.
Any lessons learned too? Like big picture, I think one of, one of the things that I took away certainly was engaging the community early and often.
Yep, that was exactly where I was going.
Okay, sorry.
No, no.
Take them with you.
Keep going.
It's all you.
Well, yes, so really engaging the public early on, that was, that was what we really learned from the first effort that we did last fall. One thing that we did the second time around that we didn't do the first time around is really engage the public with regard to selecting the districts or the sub-districts that we were incorporating into this New Orleans district. We did not do that the first time. And I think that was a strategic error, particularly on my part, not to do that. So we learned from that and we made sure that we incorporated that right from the very get going. I think we got a better response that way.
If anything, you, lessons learned.
Lessons learned. Oh, my. Well, I mean, you know, I shared with you just on the sidebar that, you know, town meeting is a difficult forum because it meets so infrequently and especially when we start scheduling special town meetings and then it becomes an emergency. You don't want to be conducting business in an emergency. It just made it, you know, necessarily difficult, I feel. So I believe it's incumbent on the planning board to, you know, structure this conversation on an ongoing basis because it did help us to surface the conversations, start to really discuss the issues about the type of housing stuff we haven't found and the difficulties that people are having who want to stay. You know, it's still a problem that we need to address and it's going to be, you know, for this, this board and whoever, we can get a planning director seat to address this, hopefully in keeping with our comprehensive plan and the housing production plan.
Thank you. And then Rebecca and Emily, how about you two? Any thoughts? How it went? Lessons learned? Started, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All right, great. Thank you. All right, moving on. So next up, we have a continued public hearing to adopt stormwater regulations. Do we have anybody here, any advocates for the stormwater regulations? Yes, hi there.
Hi, I'm, my name is Elizabeth Dennis from Apex. I'm a professional engineer. I was hired to help you guys write that regulation. I'm just here to answer any questions that the public may have about it. I made a presentation and put it last year.
Great, thank you. And I think, so Emily, there was, there was some, a question about what the public hearing typically we had at like one time, but with this, we're really, we opened up a window for, for comments, right? So is there, is it still a public hearing? Is there a different way you can phrase this? Because even like on even like when I read their agenda and it said, you know, oh, public hearing, I thought, felt like it was one and done kind of a meeting, like some, so many of our regulations are public hearings already. Is it just, it's just the process that we go through for something like this? We were just, we're engaging with the public and we're accepting public comments?
Yeah, I did post like a on the town website, when you can subscribe for notifications, I did send out a notification about the public comment period right after the last public hearing. And that flows today at 5:00 P. M. So I haven't gotten any comments.
All right, thank you. So then what is our next, what's our, what are our next steps? Do we can, how, do we keep it open?
No, I would just
All right, so do we have any comments?
Before you adopt or before we vote to adopt before we vote on the stormwater regulations, I think procedurally, we need to close the public hearing, right?
Yeah. All right. So do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
And Jen, did you want to say something else?
No.
Um, okay, so now that we're closing it. Other, do any board members have any questions? No. Emily or Rebecca, is there anything that you'd like to share regarding that? Okay. All right, so if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the, the stormwater regulations.
So moved.
Did you guys actually vote to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion? We said, we had a vote. Sorry, I forgot to do that. Yes, so any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? No? Okay, we'll call for, I'll call for a roll call vote. That's Jen, starting with Jen. All right, thank you. Sorry. Closing parts, my instructions. Okay, all right, now I'll entertain a motion to approve and to adopt the stormwater regulation, regulations.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion among the board?
I did have one question, actually. So I noticed in the regulations, they do say that there are, as, as though plans, of course, are part of what need to be submitted as, as part of the regulations. And it says, as-built plans have to be submitted within two years after completion of construction.
Yes.
So, so that seems, that seems like a long time to me. So I was kind of wondering about that, given that two, up to two years could pass between when it's completed and when those are submitted, and then things can happen in that time period. So that is a little bit concerning.
Yep. So the two-year requirement is the MS four permit requirement. You can always choose a less timeframe, a smaller timeframe. But that but that would be up to the town. We want to choose a smaller timeframe than the two years.
Okay. What other communities do?
Two years.
So that's pretty common.
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, with that, so if there are any questions, I'll call for a roll call vote, starting with Jen.
And Turcot, I.
Kristen Rappi. All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, next up is a discussion with John Baldwin regarding McFarland Farms' performance bond. John, would you like to share with us some information, please?
Yes, can you hear me all right? Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so back in October 30th of 23, I think Jen was the only one that was on the board, that's still on the board now. So we had a meeting in regards to the project at McFarland Farms Lane. I'm not the developer. I built the houses over there. The developer put up a cash bond, didn't finish the road, didn't finish a number of things. And basically, we just left it up in the air. Nobody knew what to do about the bond. It sounds like Amy Questold from K P Law said that the, the bond couldn't be given to the H O A. It's just a number of things. I have all kinds of minutes in front of me. I don't know if Emily gave you anything. The letters that was, that went out to the applicant, it was the developer, Steve Vazza. But anyway, I it seems that in the minutes from October 30th of 23, the board, the minutes say, and I don't remember this, but anyway, the board agreed that no as-built plan or bounds will prevent the house from being sold or affect resale value. That was one of the things that needed to be part of the things that needed to be done. Most likely, the town's not going to accept the way anyway. It's a little three-lot subdivision. They usually don't do that. So I spoke to my attorney today and I'm trying to help the three homeowners out. And the, some of the people that I sold the houses to have since, the houses have been sold a couple of times. So my, and I don't, I don't know, you can probably going to have to speak to town council in regards to this. So with the two, there were two options. To get the original developer to sign a document agreeing to release his interest in the remaining surety to the homeowners association. The association would then step into the developer's shoes and could apply to the board for the reimbursement of the expenses to complete the subdivision infrastructure. So what they need to do is they need to pave the, the road. I already took care of a number of things that needed to be done over there, like the roads, basically. I think it's around 20 feet wide, the layout's 50. And so I longed and seeded on either side of the roads. I probably did some rain garden work. It's a long time ago. This all took place in 2010. And so the, the plan here is for them to put the top coat on the road. The driveways need to be top coat on the driveways and and, and that's it. So so I started to mention here. So that was one of the things, to get back the, the bond that way. I don't believe, but I mean, I can try to contact the, the developer. I do have his cell phone number and his email address. And he may do that so that he could just, I think there's $10,200 left, which was never enough money to do all the work that needed to be done, but so be it. Then option two, if he doesn't want to do any of that, is to file a lawsuit against the developer and include a reach and apply, it's called claim against the town as holder of the funds belonging to the developer. And it's a cash deposit, so it's easier than just a bond because you're holding it. And the town in the association could then ask the court to enter into an agreed upon judgment directing the town to release the surety funds to the association, which is the H O A. And he says, chances are the developer would default. He's not answering the letters. And which means fail to defend and most judges would likely approve an agreement for the judgment. So the, that's all the homeowners are looking for at this point. So I've suggested to them that they go ahead and, you know, we get everything paved and, and be done with that and then go this route and see if we can't do that and get the money back. According to these minutes, which I don't even know if to the minutes. I think I just read something here in one of the letters that was from Chris who was the town planner for a short time. I can't remember his last name. Chris Ryan. He, he says something about the, the town has already taken the money or something. I don't believe that, I don't believe the town took the money and it's, I don't believe it's in the general fund. I believe it's still down at the tax collectors. The issue I have with this whole thing, and I brought it up before. If, it makes no sense to me. You're asking people to put up a bond. They don't do the work. They don't, they disappear. And then the work can't get, get completed. And then the town says it can take the money and do nothing with it. I, it has to go to town meeting, Amy Questle says. All of this makes no sense to me. So I'm hoping that my attorney, Jonathan Silverstein, who used to work for K P Law and has a relationship with Amy can have a conversation with Amy and try and work this out. Does that make sense?
So John, is that what you're ask, is that what you're asking tonight?
Yeah, I am.
So you would like your, your attorney to speak with Amy Questle and work this out?
Absolutely. It makes, it makes perfect sense. And I think you'll agree because she's working for you and he's working for me. And I'm just trying to stick my nose into this whole thing to help everybody out.
All right, thank you. Do we have anybody else here for McFarland Farms? No, okay. And John, have you tried to call the developer, Mr. Vazza?
No. Valerie had sent numerous certified letters to him in, with no, he didn't respond. It's pretty typical. I know him. I've known him for years. He's doesn't really care. He, he looked at the amount of money and said, this is going to cost me a lot more money than the bond. So he just walked away. Anyway, that's, that's the thing. I will try though. I think, I think if Jonathan can put together a letter so that he's off the hook completely, he doesn't care about the money, obviously, then he would probably sign off on that. And if Amy can agree to all of that, I think, I think we can make it work.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Baldwin?
Yeah, what's that?
I just have one comment. Sorry, I was on mute. My recollection of this issue was that the, there was remain, a remaining amount of money being withheld on the bond, 10,000 or whatever it was.
That's correct.
It hasn't gone.
That's absolutely right.
And it will be released when the work is completed.
No.
That's why we hold bonds.
That's right, but if the, but if the the problem here, Jennifer, is that the the developer isn't going to do the work. So you can't, he can't not do the work and then get the money. The problem here is that he's the only one that can, according to town council, that can get the money.
Correct.
And that's not going to work. So
I, we definitely want town council involved.
That's right.
My understanding with respect to bond releases or surety releases is that the work is completed and the surety gets released. So I don't know about the, you know, I'm no lawyer, but I'm not sure about releasing rights to get the money and then you get the money and you do the work.
No, I think the work has to be done first.
Yes.
My, my, it looks like, I mean, you have all the, you have a lot of the power to, to make this happen as far as the board, this, this was when Scott was chairman. The board agreed that no as-built plan or bounds.
Yeah, there's a handful of items that need to be done.
Well, what I'm saying is that they don't want to do that stuff. They want to get this thing paved so it doesn't deteriorate. It's a little three-lot subdivision. There's bounds there, there's so forth and so on. They've been there. People have been there since, I don't know, 2015 or something. And, you know, one of the things was from Pat Brennan was a peer review engineer was to put in a, the stop signs in, but we don't need a white line at the end. I mean, they to put in a, the stop signs in, but we don't need a white line at the end. I mean, they've been there all this time. It's, this isn't a major thoroughfare.
Well, it depends on what was approved on the plan, right, John?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, this can just continue. I mean, I'll walk away. I don't care. I'm trying to help these people. I think what needs to happen here, Jennifer, why don't we let my attorney and Amy figure this out? And if that works for you guys, um, so that it's all okay with everybody, great. If we can't make it work, then it's never gonna get done. So they'll pave it, but the rest of the stuff's never gonna get done. And so be it. So, and I don't, I don't know.
All right. Yeah, thank, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think uh, Jennifer makes a, a very good point. Uh, the reason that we have this is to make sure the work gets done. It, it would help us to make, if you actually have a line to Mr. Vazza, if you could contact him?
I will try.
Could do that, then, and then come back? Then at that point, we would be happy to talk with our attorney, with town council about this. But um, town council has already advised that they don't believe that, that this money can be released to anybody except uh, Mr. Vazza or to the general fund, and that, the latter can only be done i- in a town meeting.
Yeah, I don't think she's correct. I think that's, that doesn't make any sense. Um, I think that the work needs to be done first. There's no question about that. Um, and, and I think, and I do believe, why don't I have my attorney talk to, to her? She talk, he talks to her all the time. We'll, we'll come up with something and we'll get back to you. And uh, and figure out exactly what to do. All right? And then she can, you guys can talk to her.
Your attorney would please uh, send a letter to the planning board. We'd be just happy to discuss that with town council.
Yeah, that sounds great.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
All right, next up, uh, discussion with local historic district, I believe that's the.
There we are.
Here we are.
Thank you all for coming today.
Yes, I have some handouts for you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, but first I wanted to ask, you closed this as a public meeting. Do you need to reopen this? Um, you, didn't you close it to the, a public meeting? No?
Close, if I may through the chair. We closed the portion of this hearing that was associated with adopting the stormwater regulations.
Okay, right, 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 right.
I didn't know if it carried forward until you funded it.
Oh, no, no, that's all close.
Okay. Got my shorts on. I'm ready for tomorrow. This is a little something about us. I'm not sure. Are we sure that we're all on the same page? And what is driving our being here today is that we were before you February perhaps, right, to get your support for town meeting at our party. And it wasn't unanimous support. And so we wanna better understand why. And then I have copies here of your purpose as a planning board. And I made copies for you too.
And which all, which all, which all might introduce yourself.
I'm Pamela Camery Smith, and I just thought everybody knew me.
No, no. Pamela, where do you live?
Uh, I live at one hundred Park Street.
Okay, great. Would you like to introduce your committee members as well? Great, thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some sound.
Okay.
Right, Evelyn Walker, on King Street. That's um, Kingsburg Local Historic District.
Right, thank you.
Uh, Renee G S D, and I live on Texas.
Great, thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
My husband down there.
Thank you, thank you. And, and Pamela, one of the, the people that had the objection is not here.
I know, yeah. But there's also one other person that had objected. It was not unanimous. It was two.
Was two.
Yeah. And so, perhaps then, our motive today would be, since that person's not here, is um, we have so much in common. In the background of our group, and Ted was involved in it. We were founded in two thousand and six by Tom Broderick, who then was the town planner. Who went to the selectmen and said, I think we can try local historic districts again. They were tried back in nineteen eighty-nine at town meeting and failed. And so in two thousand and six, the selectman put a article in the Clipper, anybody interested? Renee and I applied as well as four other people. And so, we're passionate about this. And that's some, some of our background. Tom Broderick's not here anymore, and as you are fully aware, um, it hasn't been the same without him here. My opinion. Um, so how, do you have any questions looking at that, Ted? Anything for us? I know, I'm gonna say Wayne. Wayne's objection was zoning. And we just don't understand what zoning has to do with us.
Sure, all right.
So maybe we could discuss that first?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Jen, do you have anything you wanna, I just wanna make sure. Do you have any questions or thoughts?
Uh, not at the moment, no. I'll speak up if I do, th- through the chair.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jen. Uh, yes, I think, Pamela, I think one of the biggest things, it had to do with um, I, I'm not sure if we're gonna be speaking out of turn here for, on behalf of them, but I think the idea was that there was some concern about spot zoning. And so generally within, when we have zoning between, we, we will zone for a whole area. And the reason we do that is so it's there's a conformity of people. Uh, that's one of the many reasons. Um, whereas if we pick at one property within an area, it becomes essentially spot zoning. And so there's some concern that then it, it, it cha, it could change. And then if we start spot zoning there, how does that not, how do we not start spot zoning in other places? So I, I think that's one concern. I don't know exactly all of Wayne's concerns. Um, I do wish he was here, because he would certainly have people to narrate on those.
But again, I don't understand that zoning. It's not, why do you call it spot zoning?
Yeah, because it's determining the fate of one particular property, it's putting restrictions on that. I, I think that was kind of one of his concerns.
But it's not zoning.
So spot zone, it's, it, um, I'm not sure if I can do a good job describing this, but, but we, we have zoning districts in town that allow certain uses in certain districts. Spot zoning is not legal. And you can't take a general zoning district and you put specific restrictions on one property within that zone, if that makes sense.
But we can as a local historic district.
You can, I believe you can assign a certain property to a local hor, historic district. But you're still subject to avoiding spot zoning. Not zoning. That's part of the reason why, if you remember when uh, the old town hall was on the town meeting warrant to become a historic district. That was one of the big reasons that, that it didn't succeed at town meetings, that there were a lot of folks concerned that it would make it spot zoning.
Well, in a way, it doesn't make sense, because First Parish Church next door is its own, is local historic district. Bradford District is on the other side of the DPW. And um, my understanding of spot zoning is why it has such a bad um, name, is because it's it's for the benefit of a specific person, could be.
It does, yeah.
Yes, for example, you might wanna put Dunkin' Donuts, somebody might wanna have a Dunkin' Donuts right near the DPW. And that would be really bad spot zoning. It would destroy the character of the neighborhood. So I don't understand that this could be called spot zoning at all. This is just part of the National Historic Register. The whole area, Bayflower Cemetery, Boomer Square, the church, the World War One Memorial, that whole area, Bradford District is on the National Historic Register. And it's nothing to do with benefiting an individual person or an individual company. This is to benefit the whole town. This building is the, is, represents democracy. This is the Old Town Hall, where there were the, our first separation of church and state. This is a really important building, uh, in addition. Of course, it's beautiful. It's just iconic New England. And this is New England town meeting. Um, putting down, the, the whole symbol of democracy. It's shocking. You can tell I'm not over it yet. But it's not spot zoning. So in that negative horrible sense that we do not want ugly things popping up all over that benefit, you know, some person from, probably not an old town.
So I would be curious to find out when, in Duxbury, we have thirty-four properties. Where were you guys fifteen years ago, when this started? How come there was no objection?
I hear lots of, there they are.
None of us were on the board then.
Okay. And the other thing is, I'd be curious to know if the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has been, had suits from communities, saying that this is spot zoning. That there isn't a precedent set, set someplace, and we're just not aware of it?
Yeah, no, I, I think, I'm really glad that you guys, that you, you came. I think it's really important to have these conversations and understand. It's just, it's, it's, it's how we can move, you know, through things, right? And I think I, I shared then, that I grew up in a, a town, a city that was very historic and a huge, huge neighborhoods. They were all historic districts. And so I'm learning too, like about this, about this different perspective. Um, and I would like to learn more. Does, and you, anyone else on the board have any thoughts on this?
Well, because of my work with the Historical Commission, and then of course consulting with the Historic District Commission. You know, I have a sort of general familiarity with the landscape and the different perspectives and attitudes. So, and I don't wanna try and put words into someone's mouth or try and, you know, have, you know, shadow box with a phantom or anything like that. But, you know, I think there's, there's a, a strong sense of, you know, defending property rights, basically. Uh, you know, frankly, I think the whole spot zoning thing is a red herring. And I don't think that actually applies. It's just a way to argue against it. Uh, because this doesn't convey additional rights. It's a restriction. It's fundamentally the opposite from zoning. Um, you know, it's kind of the inverse. You're not granting additional rights. You're actually, it's an agreement by the owner and restrict their own rights. So it's full theory of spot zoning doesn't. You know, the, the argument that you're conveying rights to someone in a, in a special way just doesn't hold water, in my opinion. And so what you're left with is the argument about property rights, that uh, what you're doing is you're placing the, the structure itself or the land in the, in the structure in a special category, which then binds future owners. And that's the concern, that that will somehow diminish, you know, the value proposition of the property or create a problem in the future that someone else is gonna have to contend with. And it's, again, again, it's an argument that one can make. Um, and it, uh, uh, to me, you know, having thought about it a lot, you know, goes through the tension between, you know, what are the community values? How do we value the character of the streetscape? Uh, and preserve that as versus, so, so, uh, you know, it's hardcore idea that, you know, you, your property is your property and the town should stay out of your business. I think, you know, I, I see that. I agree with that as a property owner. You know, you don't wanna have entanglements. So, you know, I, I understand the resistance to it. And uh, my feeling is that we have, as a historical advocate, you know, we need to do a better job of pointing out how this, you know, historic fabric of the existing architecture really supports the, the character and the value of the town. And I encourage, you know, folks to think about that in terms of the villages, the village centers that we have. Like, cause each has kind of its own character. And I, you know, great, great that you're here and that you're prompting these kinds of conversations, because, you know, I started in the early twenty-first century. And, you know, now we're coming up on twenty twenty-five, we're in twenty twenty-five, so the seventy-five year historic threshold is nineteen fifty. So we have twentieth century neighborhoods, which, you know, could be considered historic and certainly represent, you know, the character of the town in any case.
And I would also point out that in many places, whether there are local historic districts, the property value has increased.
Well, yeah, I know.
People are fighting to get in.
Yep.
So, and maybe that's a temporary thing, I don't know, but it's happened all of my life. So um, I don't really see it going away. And I think that people move here because of the town's character.
Yeah.
And I think it's, we think it's our responsibility to help maintain that in some way. Um, so if we could, you know, get support where we need it, or maybe it would be immensely helpful. And um, that's all we're looking for. Um, and it was, I'll say from my opinion, it was a little disturbing to have one of your members get up at town meeting and say, oh, I'm on the plane, we don't need this. Basically, I mean, I paraphrased. He didn't use those terms. But he was, in my opinion, a bit flippant about it and had no real explanation that was valid. Like, he said, oh, we just don't need it. No one would ever do that here. Really? What facts do you have to support that?
Okay.
I mean, that's like shooting from the hip in a way, which doesn't make sense to me. And it was, it, it made, um, well, it introduced reason to have a much broader, deeper, intense and involved conversation than we could ever have at town meeting. So there is no point in, there's no way to really address it at that time.
Sure.
So that's why we came here. We would like to have the conversation.
Yeah, we invite you. I'm really, we're really glad you're here. We're happy to have this, this conversation. I do wish there were another voice or two on the board here today to talk about that. See if you, if Lauren, any thoughts?
Nothing specific. I just, except through your own chair, I'm, I'm very grateful that you're here uh, and to talk with us about your, about your concerns you've had, what's gone on before. Um, you know, and I, I do wanna know more about the asks that you're coming to us with, uh, so that we can consider them more effectively. And, and be responsive.
Is everybody aware that the properties are all volunteered?
Yeah.
A lot of people aren't. They're not aware of that.
Right.
How are they volunteered? So is it just for that one property owner? Or does it, does it follow per prop, per owner, I guess? But does each owner have to, to volunteer?
Uh, it's an indeed.
So it's, okay, so is that very first? Once it's in a local historic district, it's an indeed.
Okay.
And that's always disclosed, or it's supposed to always be disclosed when a house is transferred from one owner.
Okay, okay.
And then to Laura's point, maybe you can just kinda give us a refresher again. So if, if uh, an owner volunteers, it goes into the historic district, it's an indeed, and then?
No, it's not.
No.
Apparently we're painting on a beautiful house on, of Powder Point Avenue, Crooked Lane. Um, the owners came to us and volunteered to put their home in a local historic district, thanks to Terry Bose's good influence. And so I've been writing up the um, in various, um, the very format for this.
Four.
Yeah, the preliminary study report, uh, with photographs of the house as it is and the history of the house and how it um, was the original land, the map, was the original landholder and all that. So this very formal report is written up with the help of Emily. Thank you, Emily. She's wonderful. She helps with the maps. And she helps with the um, that little box, the property index box, which is Godsend. Well, anyway, um, so that, so the next step will be the, um, to visit the Calahers and have them sign the, or have them take a document to get it notarized. And then we are ready to go. Um, it would go, we will discuss it with the select board, planning board, uh, what else? Guess that's, that's it, that's it. And then we go to the, send the document to the state. Has to be approved there by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And then it comes back, then it goes to a town meeting. And so it's a lot of steps, it's a lot of work. And it's basically, it's almost a two-year process, when you say from the beginning to end.
It also then subsequently gets approved by the Attorney General's office. And then, so that.
And then he is filed, so that's, and they're Emily, but no, that part.
And then what are the restrictions on the, once that process is approved, say is approved at town meeting? What, what's the process after that for the current owner and subsequent owners?
Nothing really has to happen until the owner wants to make some changes to the outside, what, that can be seen from a public way. So they can do what they want to the inside. They can do what they want to the back. It's, so it's only.
The streetscape.
And it doesn't mean they can't change anything, but it just has to be in keeping.
Um, we gave you the Mythbuster list there. You know, if they wanna paint it purple, we would advise them not to do it. But it preserves, it preserves the wood. And so in the end, what's more important, we're trying to preserve the house and let the neighbors deal with a purple house. And so in the end, what's more important, we're trying to preserve the house and let the neighbors deal with a purple house.
Duxbury is really very neat. It's very fun.
Yes.
Yeah, if I could maybe fill the detail, there's this, the mechanism is a certificate of appropriateness. So based on uh basically a rendering typically.
They bring the plans and renderings, they bring the drawings.
And so there is, I know that um there have been challenges in the past because uh property owner may have a vision and do a fair amount of work and expense to realize their vision on paper and submit this for C O A, and then if it really isn't appropriate, then you have a problem because you're gonna ask the property owner to go back and revise and repeat the design cycle and.
So we have modified that.
Yeah, oh, tell me what how that works now.
Well, as soon as we're notified uh by the building department, we then contact that homeowner and invite them to our meeting, bring any sketches that they want, to explain what their concept is. Please don't bring any finished architectural plan. And so that's worked out really well, we come and we look at the concept, they've got photographs and what they wanna do, and and then we'll say proceed, and then they'll come back in with the plans and. So another good example, if you have another minute, is the Loring property at two sixty-five Washington Street, you might have seen a dumpster out there lately. So they came before us two years ago. And they're in a local historic district, and they wanted to modify the kitchen wing. And so they brought us a new uh porch entrance to the house and where the kitchen was gonna go, and and we met with them and we approved it, which meant we the billing department then uh issued a certificate of appropriateness. Well, here they are, six months later, and they're builders finally starting, and they called the billing department and Jim came out, and they condemned that wing of the house, they consider it so poorly that they came back to us and said, what now, where do we stand? And I'm just bringing this up, we're so friendly, we said, you photograph the exact details of the house, just send us the photographs, because they promised that they would uh match. Match those details. They don't have to come before us again. Just like the town of Duxbury had that same agreement with us. Any properties that are on a Duxbury in a local historic district? You might have remembered this came before town meeting two years ago. And we just said, just photograph it, and we're gonna keep a file, and you do the repairs, paint it, replace the corner boards, whatever. And that's how it's worked.
Thank you. So the current property that you're working on, I'm guessing that you want that to come to town meeting, and will that be ready to come to town meeting in the fall?
Yes, in March, 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 twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. I'm ready for another one already. All right, okay, yeah, it's March, okay. So, okay, so we have some time before that. Um why don't, anybody else have any more questions? Do you have any other questions of us like that? Why don't we uh continue to have discussions amongst ourselves? Um and that might be more opportunistic, uh when everybody's here, we can have those if we can acclimate to, but we can't always confirm attendance, like. Um I would wanna promise that we would let you know, but we'd like, want you to know that we are planning to work on having conversations, so, but we'll try to communicate with you if we can, if we plan to have these conversations. Um and then why don't we just touch base and maybe um we're at the end of June, basically, we're not meeting again until the end of July, why don't we touch base after Labor Day? Yeah, we're gonna be planning to kind of check back in with Emily, come back in, and we can have maybe another more formal conversation, if that works.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. It's um all right, any, the next step is uh on the agenda are committee liaisons. Emily was kind enough to provide us with the a list of implementing, you know, more committee appointments. Um looks like a number of us have terms that are expiring in uh next month. So this is a good time to talk about what people might be interested in being, you know, being liaisons to, whether you continue or you do something else. Um any thoughts or preferences? Uh Jen, we'll start with you.
Sure, I I'm happy to stay on the D E I steering committee. Unless someone else has a passionate interest that. All right.
Are you doing, I remember you had mentioned that you were, you had committed to being on the Alden Design Committee also.
I'm not on that.
Oh, you're not?
No. So I wasn't selected for that, I'm on the Open Space Committee. Oh, okay, I know, so I've only been able to attend a handful of meetings, so I'm kind of just diving into it.
Good, so you're good? Okay, great, okay. Um all right, uh so Steve, you mentioned that you needed a new committee.
My name is nowhere, yeah.
Since the working group will finish up next week, uh do you have any preferences on anything you'd like to, I'm just going straight down the line, not gonna exclude anybody, it doesn't so any thoughts on what you might like to do?
Um nothing specific, no, I I'm I'm willing to take whatever, I'm I'm the uh, I'm the new guy here, so I'm willing to take whatever others have to
Okay.
go take themselves.
Tom Tag, how about you, right now? You're on the Community Preservation Committee.
Yeah, C P C and the Housing Trust Liaison.
We don't have the Housing Trust on here, but it's Affordable Housing Trust, okay, I I was thinking Duxbury, yeah, okay, I'm great, not it, okay.
Yeah, and I I've really enjoyed the Housing Trust meetings, it's great to see what they're up to. You know, try and improve that communication and connection between the planning board. Uh but I'd be happy to uh invite someone else to the liaison to the Housing Trust, and I can focus on C P C and I'll probably still attend the Housing Trust meetings when I can, cause I am interested in what I have to be the liaison.
I'd be happy to take that on, everything.
Well, we don't.
Been stepping aside.
We don't have anybody for Old Colony right now, planning.
Oh, cause Alice is there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh. Or or is she?
Well, her, it says her term expires in two years.
She's selling it, yeah. That that works, that's, yeah, that's good, that, okay. Um uh anything else, all right, so do you wanna take, do you wanna do the for the Housing Trust?
I'd be happy to take, yeah, you're interested, sure.
Um and then let's start, Matt's term on sidewalk and bike path is still going on, um that leaves me with customer resiliency, I can continue that, um so I think we have everything covered, Emily, does that sound about right?
Um Steve's sending a report to the Housing Trust, you're saying, I'm close with resiliency tags, you can see Jen P E I and Laura at Open Space.
You're good? All right, that sounds great, if you would mind maybe sending out an updated, yeah, can you um vote on it? Oh, sure. Um so I'll entertain a motion to approve our revised uh committee liaison list.
So moved.
Second. All right, uh any discussion about the revised committee liaison? Discussion, all right, we'll go, I'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote, starting with Jen.
Jen Turcati.
Kristen Rappi.
All right, great, thank you, next up is public comments and.
We're all out of public.
We're all out of public, so I guess we can skip that. Um anyone have anything else before we close the meeting?
Oh, well, what is going on with Customer Presidency Task Force, are you still looking for a chair?
Uh well, technically, it's actually um it's actually the Lawrence and Chair.
Oh, okay.
We have it, we have a secretary and we have a vice chair. And one of our issues there is that we have Ryan Washington, the committee, who is has been awesome at finding, uh working, who's actually um finding grants, he put together two or three grants, and he went and talked to town manager and said, this is what we'd like to apply for, and uh did not get the support needed to pursue that. So I think that's a challenge because, you know, sometimes the money we can get doesn't always line up with exactly with maybe what everybody else's priorities are. Uh so that's something that um that they will need to kind of resolve. I think some of that also kind of goes to, we don't have somebody who's a centralized grants person. And so there's a lot of different conversations, and sometimes the right conversation isn't getting to the right people in the town when it needs to be on the right level, priorities aren't placed on those, um so I think that will continue to be a work in progress.
Okay.
Uh but I think there's another one that's in process. The more next time. There was conversation, yeah, yeah, I think we were actually looking at, uh one of the things that was on the list of many that many reports that um what's whole had done was uh was the Calvert along um Parison Street. And uh that was actually one of the grants that was applied for, and I think uh I I saw our D P W director earlier, and I think that 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 their level of um that wasn't at the high wasn't a top priority for the D P W. You know, they just lost some staff members, so they have a lot going on in that department right now. So more to come. Anybody else have anything for their committees? I already know that, we know about your committee. Uh Jen, anything going on with the D E I steering committee?
No, we haven't met in a little bit. Hoping before the end of the summer, probably after Labor Day is likely, more likely.
All right, thanks. All right, anybody have anything else to share? I'll take a motion to wrap up the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh we'll call, call, well, any discussion, we'll call for a roll call vote, starting with Jen.
Jen Turcati.
All right, that's it, thanks everyone.